Good evening, everybody. It's 6 o'clock, so I'm going to go ahead and call this information study session of the Lansing School District Board of Education to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Beverly?
Present.
Dr. Body?
On this committee hold over whether 16 and 17...
Oh, Dr. Burrows?
Here.
Ms. Hodgeon?
There's not much data.
Mrs. Lawrence?
Present.
Mrs. Lilji?
This is the best news that's come out of my mouth.
Mr. Lopez?
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Mrs. Willis?
Mr. Cowman?
Present.
Quorum is present.
And that includes the vote, because we do have a thing...
Dr. Body has a couple of comments in the chat.
Okay.
Recommend a green light for Pfizer's vaccine.
Somebody's microphone is way out of line.
They're pretty well demonstrated.
There we go. Quorum is present.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any public comment this evening. So we are going to actually start with... We had a long-serving board member from a few decades ago who recently passed away. Her name was Gladys Beckwith. I believe she was a former professor as well. I'm still learning more about Ms. Beckwith, which I will be happy to share at another date. But we recently learned that she passed away, I believe, yesterday. So if everyone would indulge me, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. We... Any additions to the agenda for this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent for our one and only presentation for this evening.
Thank you, President Lawrence. This is the third incarnation of our return-to-learn engagement data. We also have included our enrollment figures, and we have a pretty extensive presentation tonight. I guess that's it. We're ready to roll here, and I want to thank, before we start, all of the executive team. We worked very hard on this, in particular Jessica Benavides. We spent quite a bit of time on it this morning, just kind of fine-tuning things. So with that, we're all going to take some turns at presenting. So I'll turn it over to Jessica Benavides right now.
Good evening, everyone. I will share my screen for the engagement presentation. Make sure all of you can see. And is that clear for everyone to see on the screen? Okay, wonderful, thank you. All right, it's our pleasure once again for the month of November, data in review, to present to the board and to the Lansing, Greater Lansing community and our Lansing School District families. This month, we have added additional data, as Superintendent Sinicropi stated, which will include a little bit deeper dive into attendance and also a short succinct presentation on our count numbers and current enrollment numbers. So without further ado, let's get started. All right, we're going to take a look here at our technology data. Of course, this is data that's really important for us to look at, since we are completely online in the Lansing School District. We have... Our connectivity needs have still continued a little bit. We have staff, 13 staff in the month of November and 68 students who have requested hotspots, and those have been delivered. We have a stock of hotspots in our technology department, and so students and staff do not need to wait to receive those devices to become connected. They can actually come the very day that they request those devices, because we don't want there to be any lag time. We've given out 65 devices in the month of November, and also, we were very proud to be able to continue our onsite tech visits, even with our stay-at-work-home, stay-at-home work order. We have been able to continue our onsite tech visits, and our technicians have been committed to Monday through Friday and the days and the hours that we have normally been offering those, so that we can support our families in making sure that there's no technology issues with their devices and they can stay connected with their classes. Our work orders, we do continue to get work orders and respond to those. Last month, we had 617 staff work orders and 200 student work orders. A piece of information that we did add this month to connectivity, because this was a question that has come up, is what are we doing about damaged devices? And those devices, we do take care of in the technology department. In the month of November, we did replace 47 damaged devices. I wanted to make sure that we included that data this month. I'm now going to turn it over to Executive Director of Human Resources, Suzie Corbin, to talk to us about communication.
Thank you, Ms. Benavides. Hopefully, everybody can hear me well. The data presented on this slide reflects the district-wide communication to our students and families. This is in addition to the work that's done at the school level. Social media does seem to be our primary source to share our communication updates to families, as you can see by the 67,646 posts that were seen and the 10,598 likes, shares, or comments. The five district robocalls translates into our 73,968 calls, emails, and texts that were also sent to families. Can move it forward one. And I will be covering meals tonight as well to support John. During the month of November, we distributed 169,684 meals, 39,000 of those meals on November 24th alone for the Thanksgiving weekend. WLNS recently did a story highlighting the partnership with Sedexo that provides meals to our community. There will be distributions on December 18th and December 22nd to support our community over the holiday break.
Thank you. Next, we will be talking about Parent University and Connect with Kids with Executive Director Black.
Thank you, Mrs. Benavides. For the month of November, we had seven Parent University sessions focused on a variety of topics. The most... The majority of our topics were our grade-level A-Day presentations presented by our principals. Mr. Sergio Keck, I'm proud to say, presented an A-Day presentation in Spanish. So that was a highlight of the month. We also had a couple of others. I Don't Understand My Child's Homework, providing tips to parents to help them out. And another one was helping students work through conflict restoratively, making sure that parents are being taught the same kinds of conflict resolution skills that we use in our schools. We had 22 participants for the month of November. This number is low, and we do expect for it to rise moving forward, particularly after the holidays. I think that because of the holiday season, the numbers are just low. In regards to Connect with Kids, this is our digital socio-emotional learning program. These numbers continue to rise each month, particularly with our videos watched. A lot of our videos are... The videos, excuse me, are non-fiction videos focused on topics such as respect, courtesy, attendance, and achievement, and responsible decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it next over to Executive Director Keck to talk to us about Learning Labs.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Benavides. Can you please move the slide to the next one?
I'm working on that. There it goes. It was sticking for some reason. I ran into that this morning, too, so thank you for your patience.
Thank you and good evening. We continue to enroll and place students in Learning Labs where there is space available. We are at 88% capacity, and during the month of November, we opened a second room, a post oak, and one more at Gardner. So we are very grateful for our community partners, for the excellent work that they're doing with our students during these difficult times. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to take it now to the Office of Student Learning with Associate Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, Dr. Camila Diaz.
Thank you very much, Executive Director Benavides. I am pleased to share that we are able to report in the month of November that we hit our 100% mark in completing our contingency learning plans for our students with IEPs. Each of our just under 2,000 students who have IEPs in the district may have more than one contingency learning plan within their IEP, because they have a separate one for each service or program that they're a part of. So that was quite an undertaking by our special education staff and was very... They were very excited to be able to reach that 100% mark. In terms of our educational development plans, these are career-centered plans that we have at kindergarten through 12th grade. Although it is not a requirement, it is something we felt was really important to engage our students in, thinking about careers and interests even at very young ages. In November, we had 79% average in terms of EDPs completed across the district, and we are well on our way to reaching our 100% goal during the month of December. As you all are familiar with the Ebersol Center, they have reimagined themselves alongside of the district as a whole and are providing multiple face-to-face through the screen, but live lessons tied to different activities and events at the Ebersol Center and science-related. And they've conducted in the month of November 15 synchronous distance-learning sessions with classrooms across seven different schools and had a total of 276 student participants. We continue to provide live innovative arts and fitness sessions, and during the month of November, we had 213 art sessions, 178 PE sessions, 88 music sessions, and 33 library sessions. In addition to these live classes, we also have recorded sessions that the students can access at any time. And something we thought you might enjoy sharing with us this evening is a... One of our students at Gardner, her name is Jambi Guji, and she completed a music assignment for her teacher, Ms. Yutie Lightfoot, and we wanted to share that with you tonight. So, Ms. Benavides, will you key that up for us?
I certainly will try. This is going to need an unshare and a reshare, so you will just be patient with me here. Let's make that a little bit bigger, and I need to share my computer sound. Okay, is that queued up? Because I don't want you to miss a minute of this. This will be the highlight, honestly, of the board presentation. I've been singing this rap since it was sent to us, just so you know.
Yeah, this time it was for students to create a rap about themselves, and Jambi did an amazing job, so go ahead.
All right, here we go. Take it away.
Hi, I'm Jambi. I'm in Mr. Lilji's 6th grade class, and my rap is about myself. My name is Jambi Song. People call me Cece. My favorite candy is peanut butter Reese's. I also like Persia's and Milky Ways. If I see you on the hall, then I'll probably say, "Hey." My birthday is in January. I tell everybody. At the first book, I learned to read the Cat in the Hat. I want to be a nurse, but who knows? This is the end of the rap. That's just how it goes.
Yay! We hope you enjoyed that as much as we did. She did an excellent job. That may be worth some money someday, just saying. All right.
Excuse me, Jessica, could you let the board know who the teacher was?
Oh, did you hear it at the beginning?
Yeah, just kind of...
I believe that was Mr. Lilji's class at Gardner.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's see if I can resume here. Okay. Are we back up and running? Excellent. Okay. The next slide is a special presentation this evening. We thought it would be very interesting to share some adult education information with the board. Of course, let's see if the slide will work with us. Mr. Keck, one second. Doesn't want to move forward. There we are. Excellent.
Oh, Mrs. Benavides, that's a tough act to follow. Okay. 247 adult learners have enrolled in our programs in September, and we average 15 new enrollments per week. We have sessions in the morning, afternoon, and evening, and we provide ESL, GED, and high school completion classes. Adult learners also participate in Pathway to Options, which is a component of workforce development that emphasizes career technical education, soft skills, and job opportunities. And in January, we're starting three new career options for our students: Certified Nursing Assistance, IT, and Professional Translation Certifications. So we have a testing lab at the Dr. Evans Welcome Center, and we average about eight tests per week, and this occurs on Wednesdays. As of the end of November, we have graduated three adults with a GED and three adults with a high school diploma. Thank you.
Thank you. Next part of our presentation is going to be a deep dive into attendance. We know that the board is very interested and very invested in our student attendance, and so today, we are going to take a little bit deeper dive. I would like to point out our wonderful Minutes Matter Make Them Count logo for our attendance initiative. Hopefully, that's not a shameless plug, but we think it's a really important part of our presentation tonight, so I wanted to make sure I added that. I'm going to start out with a few facts that we thought were very important to frame some of the work that we are doing in the Lansing School District. The United States' average chronic absenteeism prior to COVID-19 was 18 million students. So what that means is 18 million students nationwide were missing 15 days or more of school.
Excuse me, Jessica. You said 18 million?
Oh, thank you. Eight. Eight. I needed to enunciate. Thank you. We don't want to give the wrong data. I appreciate that. Since COVID-19, though, so far in the 2020 school year, that number has risen to 25 million students nationwide. What that translates into is that means that half of our K-12 public school children nationwide are chronically absent. So that number is very saddening, and it definitely takes a task force to tackle that problem. It's not a unique problem to the Lansing School District, and we wanted to make sure that everyone understood that this is really a problem that we are trying to solve nationwide. 60 Minutes, a couple of weeks ago, actually did kind of an expose or a series on this, and so it is definitely something that's also getting public attention, which is really great to see, because this is something that's going to take everyone to get our students to regularly attend. With the chronic absenteeism rates, students who live in communities with high levels of poverty are four times more likely to be chronically absent. So when we think of half of all public school children nationwide, we can start thinking about that, that there are going to be populations that are higher than others or pockets of cities that are higher than others, so that's not proportional across the United States, which is also another concern. Due to COVID-19, many children across the world have not been able to attend school at all. So I at least feel that we are lucky to be able to have the technology that we do readily available to students to be able to at least complete online instruction, even though we know that face-to-face instruction, of course, would be our preferred method, and we would love to get back to that as soon as it's safe for our families and our students. So just to frame that work, that tells you... One of that informs everyone about why we feel that chronic absenteeism is something that we really need to be focused on, and we wanted to show real-time numbers in addition to the percentages this month. So let's take a look at the month of November for our elementary students. 63% of our students were regularly attending in the month of November. So just to remind everyone, what that means is they have missed no more than two days of school. So they either had perfect attendance, zero days, or they missed one to two days of school in the month of November. If we take a look at that in real-time numbers, that equates to just over 4,000 students regularly attending for our kindergarten-through-eighth-grade self-contained classrooms. So this does not include our high school data, which we will cover on in the next slide. I do want to point out that 4,000 students is a lot of students. In some of our neighboring districts, that's their entire enrollment population, so I would like to commend our families and our students who are regularly attending. It's quite a feat in the situation that we are in with COVID-19 and a lot of the struggles that we are all having during this time.
Can I ask a quick terrifying question before we move on?
Oh, of course.
I know we used the way to the end, but I want to just... It's specific to the slide. Do we know how that translates or compares to previous years' November attendance?
So I do have a slide coming up that will talk about daily attendance rates. However, I don't have the exact percentage of chronic absenteeism, but we certainly can pull that data. We do have it at our fingertips to be able to pull and give to the board.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a wonderful question. If we take a look at our trend data for regularly attending students for the month of September, October, and November, we see in September our rate for tier-one or satisfactory attendance is 63% of students. We had a little bit of a dip in the month of October with 59%, and then we are back up to 63% in November. We, of course, would like that rate to be much higher, and we are hoping that we are now in the upward trend. We're excited to be able to share with you some of the initiatives that our attendance initiative is taking, and hopefully, we can start turning those numbers around to having more students regularly attending school. Let's take a look at our secondary attendance. So this attendance is specific to our 7th through 12th graders at our three high schools. We take a look at our November attendance. We have 41% of our high school students or just over 1,300 students regularly attending. Unfortunately, we have about the same number of students who are chronically absent. So these slides are really important when we start translating our percentages into students, because you can see this is really going to take a village to make sure that we are supporting our families in turning this attendance around. 1,300 students is a lot of students to make phone calls to, follow up with emails and texts. We are doing that. However, it is going to take everyone's eyes on this and a community-wide outreach to make sure that we can turn these numbers around. If we take a look at our tier-one data for secondary schools, so students who are regularly attending, in September, 34% of our students were regularly attending. In October, we had a nice uptick of 46%, so that was really great and encouraging data to see, and this month, we were at about 41%. So we had a slight decline in our regularly attending students, but we do still feel like we are in an upward trend, so that's excellent. Just to refer back to the chronic absenteeism facts that I showed you with half of our students being chronically absent in the United States, I wanted to give you our total chronic absenteeism rate for the district. So if we were to combine our secondary and elementary attendance, around 32% of our students are chronically absent. So just to put in perspective kind of the nationwide numbers and then what we are combating here in the Lansing School District. This is a little bit of our deeper dive that we wanted to show you. In our attendance initiative, we have weekly leadership team meetings, which I know Executive Director Black will be talking about a little bit in the next slide. However, I did want to let you know that we do meet weekly in the leadership team, and we also meet weekly with our attendance data team. So this is just one of the pieces of data that we regularly look at. We like to take a deeper dive to figure out what is the problem and how can we solve it with chronic absenteeism. This slide talks a little bit about the grade levels, where we are seeing the most opportunity for growth, and also some celebrations of where we're seeing some higher levels of engagement and attendance. So if you take a look at the slide here, and I know it's quite small, and I apologize, but in our 2nd through 6th grade levels, we're seeing some of the higher levels of regular attendance. They are in the rates of between 60 and 70%. And then when we look at one of our areas for opportunity for growth and an area that we are concerned about and focusing energy on in the next coming months, and I know our high schools absolutely have their eye on this, is our 9th grade data. So that's data that we are seeing that their chronic absenteeism is an area that we are concerned about. We just wanted to give you an overview of our grades and how they look broken down from kindergarten all the way to grade 14. Here is a comparison of our daily attendance rate compared to last year. We know this is a question given to us by the board members last month, so we wanted to make sure that we included that. This is a comparison from 2019, a year of regular face-to-face, a typical year of school, if you will, and then, of course, this year in 2020 in the orange line. I'm going to turn it over to Executive Director Black just to talk a little bit about how the attendance initiative got started, the timing, and how that's impacting where we are right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Benavides. So looking at this average daily attendance comparison, it was actually last winter. We were reviewing data, and we realized then that we had an attendance problem. And again, the numbers were awfully large. We have two attendance specialists in our district, Ms. Rose Tap House and Mr. Brian Crenshaw. I knew that it was a much larger problem than two people could handle on their own. I, at that point, actually, that is what prompted me to initiate an attendance campaign, which actually turned into an initiative, at which time, we had no idea we would be facing a global pandemic, but the timing was right. We had the team in place, and I want to point out really quick who the leaders are for the attendance initiative. Ms. Lisa Carlson, Mr. Teddy Simmons, Kurt Burnham, Ben Botwinski, and of course, Jessica Benavides and myself are co-coordinators of the team, and so I'm very grateful to have those individuals on the team, because they make a big difference in regards to just, you know, thinking this through, coming up with ideas, and very innovative ways of how to attack the problem that we're facing. Again, once again, we had the team in place, so we felt like we were in probably a better position than most districts, because we have folks in place and dedicated to reengage students back to school and to online learning. So some of the things that we will continue to do, and we've done all along, is make those phone calls, follow up with emails, making sure that we're providing the support that parents and students are sharing that they need in regards to, you know, connectivity, devices, not knowing necessarily how to connect. We have scheduled a morning blend session, hopefully coming up after the winter break. We'll continue with robocalls. The data department is working on a nudge letter that actually rolled out today, and so we will be notifying individual families about their students' attendance trend for the last two months. We will continue to review weekly data, monthly data, and continue to do these deep-dive data reviews. We also have a PCAC presentation scheduled in February, just to reach out to our community. This is a community issue. We want to make sure that we are engaging our community partners, our faith and worship business leaders on this initiative. This is not an initiative that one or two people can handle. It really does take a village, and we are really trying to engage the community on helping us... attack this problem. So, you know, there are other initiatives that we're looking at. We have, just today, in executive team, we talked about an artificial intelligence program that we're going to look into using to gear up or to ramp up, excuse me, the contacts being made. It takes a lot of folks to make phone calls to, you know, two, three thousand folks. But, and so we believe that the artificial intelligence program will assist us in re-engaging our kids. Jessica has a very wonderful story I would like for her to share about the amount of students that we have re-engaged back in the school since launching a Take Five Initiative. And we're going to talk about that, and maybe that's when it's supposed to be talked about. Jessica, I might be jumping the gun on that, but would you like to take it from there?
I can take it from there.
And then we can talk about it on the next slide, or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So as a leadership team, we've spent a lot of time in committees, and we have, you know, Cordelia, how many subcommittees do we have in the attendance?
Six.
And they range from community involvement to professional development, data, and so forth. And so in the leadership team, we, when we were taking a look at our attendance data, we decided to pivot a little bit and really just kind of take the bull by the horns, if you will. It was time to really kind of do a little bit of research and actually engage our attendance initiative. When you look at a screen of Zoom and all of those boxes are filled with faces, that's an opportunity. And so the opportunity for us was to utilize the people in the attendance initiative task force. And we began a program called, that we like to call Take Five. It's a reconnect and re-engagement strategy that we wanted to use with our families. And the Take Five Initiative came from literally adopting five students or more, so taking five students under your wing and calling those students twice a week for three weeks. So this initiative started November twenty-third. And the idea around the initiative was we wanted to find out what are the actual reasons our students are not attending? And what can we do to offer supports and connect those families with what they need to make sure their students are regularly attending? In this, we found lots of really interesting things. First of all, let me tell you who the Take Five Initiative target students were. We decided to target this intervention with our kindergarten through eighth grade students in our self-contained. And in that group of students, we focused on our students that we felt needed the most reconnection. So these were students that missed ten days or more in the month of September, ten days or more in the month of October, and then five days or more in the month of November. So that was our target. We wanted to find out what is the real barrier here to our students not attending school. What we found out was an array of information. So we were able to connect out of the two hundred and fifty-nine targeted students in this group, we were able to connect with a hundred and fourteen students. So that information tells us a little bit of something right there. So each of our mentors or our attendance initiative individuals that adopted these five students used phone call, email, and text to connect with these families. Of the two hundred and fifty-nine, we were able to connect with a hundred and fourteen. So those are students, parents that responded back to us or that we were able to connect to live through a phone call. Of those hundred and fourteen students, we learned some interesting things. One is, we learned that parents really do like follow-up. So sixty-nine of that hundred and fourteen said, please follow up with me again. We appreciate your phone call, your nudge, your concern with our family, and we are very appreciative of the Lansing School District to reaching out. That was great information to collect. Thirty of that hundred and fourteen said that they were experiencing some type of technical issue. And so then we were able to connect them with the technology department, our onsite visits, provide hotspots, and address any technical needs that had not already been addressed for those families. Thirteen of our students had relocated, and that was some information that we gleaned from making these phone calls, texts, and emails. We had nine students that we were able to refer their parents to Learning Labs. So that's a real success story. We've had several families that we were able to connect with, and they said, I'm working during the day. It's been very difficult with my elementary student to get them connected. And so we were able to connect them with their Learning Labs, and they're now enrolled and regularly attending. So we're very excited about some of the success stories that have come out of these phone calls from the Take Five Initiative. We had eight students that were requesting additional special education services, so we were able to connect them with our special education department and provide additional needs that those students may have. And we did find out that four of our students are recently homeless. And so we were able to connect those students with Rose Tap House, our homeless specialist. So that to say, we've learned some really wonderful information and learned some ways to connect our families with supports that they need. We know that a hundred and fourteen students doesn't solve the problem, but we do know that a hundred and fourteen students is definitely a place to start. I'm happy to say that a hundred and twenty-two students out of our initiative have started attending school after these phone calls have been made. I wouldn't stretch to say so far as they're regularly attending, but as all of you know, sometimes getting started is the hardest part. So we're really happy to say that the initiative has made an impact on at least several of our families. The piece of data that is provided here on our Take Five slide is a question that we thought you might ask, because it's definitely one that I would ask, which is who are these students? So are these students, students that have been chronically absent the entire time? Are these students that were here with us last year, they already had attendance issues, and now that has just been pervasive into the school year? So the questions that I asked our data to people to pull were, are the students, where are the students with their attendance last year, and are the students new to the school district? So this information was really eye-opening to me. I really did not expect this to be the results of the data. So we can see from the pie chart, we had eight students that were actually regularly attending this year that are now not regularly attending. So those are students that we paid special attention to, to find out what is the barrier, because that's a difference in habit for them and for their families. We have thirty-three students that were chronically absent last year, and then forty-nine students last year that were kind of on the bubble. So students that were not chronic, but also not regularly attending. Cordelia, can you share a little bit about how we referred our chronic and, in other words, the yellow pie part? And also the blue with the students that are at risk. So I know you've been working on that piece.
Right. So our attendance specialist, Rose Tap House and Brian Crenshaw, they work with the community partners. They, we have several community partners that we're in connection with that works with students and families around attendance and, again, attempting to discover what the barriers are around why they're not attending and engaging in screen-to-screen learning. And so what we've done is we've taken the forty-nine and the thirty-three chronic and at-risk students, and we've referred them out to community partners that are going to wrap around, if you would, these students and their families to provide a little extra support. They may need supports in areas that, you know, and areas that we just may not be able to assist them with, such as housing or, you know, other kinds of social support. I'll put it that way. And so we are looking to hear back from our community partners on a weekly basis with the progress of these students in regards to whether or not they have connected with the family. We will be able to look at our data to tell whether or not they've engaged. So that will be pretty interesting. And so those are some of the things that we're doing to, again, once again, re-engage our severe chronic and at-risk students into our screen-to-screen learning.
So the orange part of the pie was the part that I think I particularly was most surprised with, which is that a hundred and sixty-nine of these students were brand-new to the Lansing School District. So that means that they could have been kindergartners, moved, and then come back. So they could be students that have attended at some point in the Lansing School District, but they did not attend last year or were enrolled, excuse me, last year in the Lansing School District. So a couple of ah-hahs that came from that is just how much relationships matter, right? So these are students that have not been able to enter their brick-and-mortar school and possibly make those connections like our families do on a year-to-year basis. When our Lansing School District mentors, Take Five mentors called, many families were very excited to be able to talk to someone, and we were able to make connections with their school. We know our schools have been working very hard. They've done drive-through supplies. They've done fun events, trick-or-treating events where you can drive through the parking lot. So we know that our principals are making the best of this situation, but we can also see the effects on some of our new students and really getting connected with their community. A question that you may be wondering is how many of these students are kindergartners? Because, of course, those would be first-time to our Lansing School District. And of the hundred and sixty-nine, about forty-nine are kindergartners. And so those are students that we need to be focusing on, because this is their first experience in the Lansing School District. We want to make sure it's a positive one, even though it isn't a usual one. All right. I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. Chapman to talk to you a little bit about our nudge letters and robo calls, which is an initiative that we have taken with our seventh through twelfth grade students for the month of November.
Thank you, Ms. Benavides, and good evening, Board of Education and to the Lansing community. The nudge letters and robo calls have proven to be a definite means of recapture, notifying, and re-engaging students. The concept of the nudge letter was brought to the Lansing School District nearly a decade ago, when several of our schools were recipients of what is known as SIG or School Improvement Grants. The nudge letter that we have developed for this point in time of monitoring attendance and encouraging or recapturing students to attend, it will not just be a school-level initiative, as we have known it to be in the past, but this is from the executive team and from the instructional division in particular. The purpose of the nudge letter is to, number one, so that the family and the students know that at the district level, we are concerned. And with that concern, we have a means of support, and we would like to know what is the bind, what is the hindrance from attending school. You'll notice on the sample letter that each individual student will actually receive for a thirty-to-sixty-day timeframe the number of absences per period that they have acquired. Embedded in that personal message is also a reminder to both the student and to the family that for every day that an absence occurs, that is every moment that the student is possibly getting further and further away from being on track for graduation. We chose to implement the district-level nudge letter communication for students in grades seven through twelve, with a very heavy focus with students in grades nine through twelve, because those are our credit-bearing years. Once the students are provided with the nudge letter from the district, the very last statement and the closure asks that encourages the students and the family to please to reach out to those individual teachers for each of those periods represented in the data presentation within the letter, and also to the school principal or to someone at the school level that they believe that they can connect with, especially if they are having a personal experience and they need some community and district support to help turn things around for them. In addition to the nudge letters, as was previously stated by Executive Director Black, robo calls have been consistent through our communications department, but also through our student support specialists. Some of the additional means or ways that we are encouraging return, we are encouraging engagement as it relates to attendance is through our visits, through our different specialists, through our public safety division. We have actually been walking the pavement and knocking on doors, doing wellness checks to make sure that our students and their families know that the Lansing School District cares, and we are definitely here to support them and to engage them in the learning. For this first round of nudge letters that actually went out on yesterday, as Ms. Black shared, we have nearly fifteen hundred for this first round. A total of one thousand four hundred and sixty-six letters were issued yesterday, five hundred and fifty-four for students at Eastern High School, four hundred and eight for Everett, and five hundred and four for Sexton. Students that are a part of the special population of English-language learners, those families, many of their caregivers and parents are not English-speaking. So not only will the front of the letter be provided in standard English, but the reverse side of the letter in seven, for the seven languages that we have been successful in translating those letters into, on the reverse side of the letter, the student, the family, will be able to read and interpret that message in their native language. And so through Mr. Keck and his staff, we were able to accomplish that, because we want to make sure that we are not only connecting just in standard ways, but in ways that address the cultural diversity within our district.
Thank you. This nudge letter will be going out for kindergarten through twelfth grade, starting in the month of December. We wanted to give a chance to do some fact-finding with our Take Five program, and we wanted to make sure that families really felt supported with the phone calls and then weren't going to receive a nudge letter and feel like there was, you know, something unresolved. So we will begin the nudge letters next month to include all students in the Lansing School District kindergarten through twelfth grade. These letters are personalized, so not every, every grade level has a little bit of a different letter. And then you also see the blue text that's in that letter, and those are hyperlinks to attendance works, which offer parents' tips and statistics to help them get their school, their children re-engaged into school. Okay. The next part of our presentation, we are going to talk a little bit about count and enrollment. So the first thing with count and enrollment, and I know this is a slide that many of you have seen, but it's a good reminder for all of us, especially those in the Lansing community that may not be familiar with the terms around count, and it can be confusing. Are there two numbers that we look at for the Lansing School District? One is enrollment, and that's a simple headcount of students who are actually enrolled in the Lansing School District. So students that have signed up, they've gone through our online enrollment system, and they have chosen Lansing School District as their district of choice. We then have count, which is a period of time that we actually physically count our students who are regularly, or who are attending, excuse me, within the count window. When we count students during the count window, that gives us our number that we are able to report as an FTE. The FTE then calculates our per pupil allocation. So just to be clear, what that means is if we have a student in fifth grade who attends during the count window, we are actually able to count them as a one-point-oh FTE and receive their full per pupil allocation. If we have a high school student, however, who has an eight-period day, and they only regularly, or excuse me, they only attend during the count window four of those periods, then we can only count them as a point-five FTE, and therefore, we only receive half of their per pupil allocation. So just to kind of explain a little bit about the FTE and how that's calculated, I thought it would be good to include a few examples. When we take a look at the Lansing School District, our current enrollment is nine thousand eight hundred and forty-nine. We have included here some of our at-risk demographics. Those are things that we show every time for our engagement report to the board, so we did want to make sure that for our engagement report to the board, so we did want to make sure that we included those. It was important for us this evening to talk about enrollment and count, especially after the deep dive for attendance, because we know that kids who are attending are attending during count window and can therefore be counted as FTE. And so it's important to understand the relationship with those, especially during these challenging times with COVID-19. So this graph is something that was shown to the board last year, and we thought it was important to continue with the graph so you can do some comparison to years past. This graph starts with spring of 2016 and then ends, of course, with our fall count 2020. It is unaudited. There's a process that our count has to go through, and then it does become an audited number. And we are currently in that process right now. So as you can see, the number that is in that greenish teal color is our actual enrollment number. That's the number that I showed you on the previous slide of the 9,849 students. So those are students that are in the Lansing School District and their parents have chosen this school district as their district of choice. The number in orange is the number of FTE that we were able to count. So again, I don't want to translate necessarily those into numbers of students, because those could be partial FTEs. So if I'm a student that counted as .5 and Dr. Chapman counted it as .5, those are two students, but we are only able to count them at that time as a 1.0 FTE together. So just to be thinking about it in that way. Due to the attendance struggles that we have and that are happening nationwide, this is something that we are seeing, that FTE, there is a big discrepancy between our actual enrollment and our FTE. One of the reasons for that too, that I'd like to highlight, is just our decreased number of kindergarteners. We are about 188 kindergarteners less than we were this time last year. And we know that this is something that is happening statewide, if not nationwide, because families are holding their youngsters back and keeping them at home in hopes that next year, they will be able to enroll them in kindergarten for a full face-to-face experience in school. Superintendent Sinicropi, is there anything that you would like to add to the enrollment and count before I conclude our presentation?
Man, I can't believe I unmuted myself. I felt for sure. It's been a long time. First of all, I want to thank Jessica and the members of the executive team that presented tonight. It was very, very intense. Thank you very much and very thorough. I appreciate that. A couple of things, and you're going to hear more about this. On January 7th, we're going to be, we'll bring Budget Amendment 1 to you, and we'll talk a lot more about count and what that means. But keep in mind that legislatively this year, it's a little bit different. In the past, we would take that number, our FTE count of 9,464.11, and multiply that by our foundation allowance, and that's the amount of revenue we'd be getting basically from the state. This year, because of circumstances, the state legislatively has assigned percentages to different things. Our approximate count that we will be able to use for this school year is about, we're not exactly sure yet, we'll know probably in a couple of weeks, around 10,200 is what our count is. So using all the percentages, because it's a combination of our attendance enrollment, excuse me, in 2019 and the enrollment in 2020. So I just want to keep that in mind. I know we have a lot of different questions and we'll, we're also going to be taking notes, because I'm pretty certain we're going to have some things that you're going to ask for that you'll want to see next time. So we will make sure that we take good notes. We all will probably take notes and combine them and hope we have everything that we need. But once again, this was, I don't want to say a labor of love, but you know, this was a lot of work that people put together, and I hope it was helpful not only to the board, but to the community to see where we're at at this point in time. And I'll be quiet now. I'll turn it back to Jessica.
Jessica, you're muted. Thank you. I got a signal. My mute was on. Just wanted to thank you for your time tonight and engagement in our presentation. And we will now open it up to any questions or feedback or requests for data that you might have.
We're going to go to Mrs. Willis and then Mrs. Lilge.
Thank you, and I apologize. I was doing most of the meeting in the car, picking up my kid, who decided to throw all of her goldfish on the ground. But I did have a question. First of all, thank you guys for the presentation. And there's clearly a lot of feedback from our prior months of this data that we can see incorporated and brought into this presentation. So I just want to acknowledge and thank you for that. And the content around the national attendance trend due to COVID was very helpful. I'm curious where we stand compared to neighboring districts as far as daily attendance rate.
Jessica, go ahead and respond, and I may add a couple of things to that too.
So the interesting thing about comparing to our neighboring districts is that several of our neighboring districts have chosen to count their attendance in a different way than we have. So because of the online platforms that our neighboring districts, including ourselves, are using, the state has offered a provision to count two-way contact as a means to count students. So when I say that, what that means is, in order to, there's two, I'm stumbling a little bit because it's actually pretty complex. So there's a couple of ways that we can count students. One is for funding. We need to have one two-way contact a month.
Excuse me. Yeah, let me explain. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me explain that just real quick.
Please.
One contact a month would basically be a student signing in for one class or one day. So for funding purposes, that's all we have to have.
And that's for 75% of our students. So to keep current funding, that is what the state has said we need to keep our funding for our students. So on one hand, I'm sure your face is like mine, thinking, wow, that bar is really low for our students. How are we going to keep them engaged? How are we keeping kids in school? But when you look at it from the financial side, that really does help the schools across the state of Michigan, because that means that funding is not going to be cut. So we have to think about it in that way. There is also an accountability piece to attendance, which a lot of school districts around us are utilizing, which is two two-way contacts for the week. And when we have two two-way contacts for the week, that counts as what we would consider perfect attendance for the week. So let me kind of break that down for you. So what that means, again, like Superintendent Sinicropi is saying, is if I go to an elementary school and I attend two days out of the week, or I log in two days out of the week, then I am counted as having 100% attendance for the week. So our standard here in Lansing, we have decided to go with daily attendance, and I think that was a really smart move on our part, only because we know that for our students, we are very concerned about engagement and making sure that our students are online and they're learning. And by taking daily attendance and period attendance, we can really track the trends for our students and make sure that they are regularly attending. And we can tackle, even like you saw with the nudge letters, certain hours that they might not be attending and start bridging the gap. So when you ask the question about how do we compare to other school districts around us, it's actually quite difficult to do, because we are calculating our absenteeism a little bit differently. I actually did have Kurt Barnum today, though, run, if we were to do the two-way contact for the month of November, what percentage would the Lansing School District be in? Because I kind of anticipated this question might come. And our two-way contact percentage for the month of November would be at 95%.
So that's very helpful. So can I ask a clarifying question in a different way? Essentially, are we saying that as the Lansing School District, our criteria for identifying as attendance might be potentially more stringent than other districts? And then my follow-up to that is, so when we are identifying students on those three tiers, this is based on daily attendance, not based on the two-way communication and nor the just the two-day minimum. Is that correct?
Yes, that's accurate. Our chronic absenteeism is based on daily attendance for our elementary students and then period attendance for our secondary students.
Okay, I'm following that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That was a great question.
Mrs. Lilge?
Thank you. I'm just blown away. I just, I have, I guess, three comments and then just one question. So thank you for including the information, you know, for imagining the questions that we might ask. Number one, about the legislative situation with the count. That's a huge relief. Thank you for sharing that, Sam. Also, Jessica, thank you for, and thank you Kurt for running those numbers about the two-way contact. That's also a huge relief. I think you all are just doing the most amazing job. I mean, thank you. I'm almost speechless. I just am listening to all of the things, all of the extra steps that you're taking. And I see it trickle down too, because you know, I live with a teacher and I hear him making calls when kids aren't showing up. And I know that's coming, you know, I know that's coming from the top and coming down to the teachers. And the in-person wellness checks, I mean, just the attendance committee that you have and the specialists that you have working, just bravo, kudos, you all. Keep it up. Thank you a million times. So my question is, this is not super important. I was just curious. And I just wonder if there's a way to know, like, I have one friend who just, she has three kids and decided just not to do school at all this year, just wait until next year. And if, you know, if it takes them a little longer to finish up, you know, by the end of 12th grade, then so be it. And then, of course, there are parents that have chosen to go elsewhere. I did just speak with a parent who's got kids at Wexford and Wood Creek, and they've been there for a few years, so they've kind of seen, this is a quick tangent. Just want you to know that about a year ago, they were considering leaving the district and moving their kids elsewhere. But they just are so thrilled right now with everything that's happening, even with screen-to-screen learning over at Wood Creek and Wexford. They said it just keeps getting better and better, and they're really, really happy. So I just wanted to share that. But is there any way to know, like, of our decrease in enrollment and count, how many people could potentially come back? You know, what do you think about that?
I'll take a, am I answering that one? Okay, good.
You're welcome.
Somehow I lost the screen. All of a sudden, my screen was gone. We're asking ourselves those questions in terms of, you know, what our thoughts are. And I think that one of the things that with the attendance initiatives and us visiting and talking to parents, we're going to start hopefully gathering some of that information, because I have heard a couple, as Mrs. Lilge had, a couple of different cases where parents just said, you know, we're going to sit out the year and then they're just going to do ninth grade again, or you know, whatever kind of thing. So a lot of it, I look at this as very similar to what we've talked about in the past. People, this includes families and students and staff and board members and everybody else, handle this in many different ways, these circumstances right now. And I think that we need to be empathetic towards, you know, everybody. Do we want kids to do well in instruction and academics? Absolutely. But we also want them to be safe and to be confident that we can keep their kids safe and themselves safe. So there's a lot of challenges with this. I'm certain we're going to have some families come back. How many? I don't think we know right now.
Mrs. Lilge, any further questions? Okay, we're going to go to Dr. Rodriguez and then Mr. Lopez and then Dr. Beverly. That, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you for the presentation. And these difficult times and doing a difficult presentation, and I'm so happy to see the teamwork. I have three, it's no question, all the work that you are doing together is incredible. And it's much of the leadership in the Lansing School District. I had, the first question is about what kind of communication? Because you had attendance teams and other teams, but for a long time, until Ms. Dr. Chapman talked, nobody mentioned principals or schools. How all this team in downtown, uncommunicating, unworking with the building, with the teachers, with the counselors? How this connection go together? Because to have a team in downtown and to have administration and teachers and houses and all that, it's a different kind of the game. Then how, everything that you are doing is going through through the buildings and through the teachers and through the council or people responsible directory from the students?
Let me start responding and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Chapman. But you're right, Dr. Rodriguez. The most important people in all this are the people in the buildings that know the kids and the families the best. And that includes teachers and principals and support staff, secretaries, includes everybody. We've mentioned a couple of times, it takes a village here, and it truly does. We're setting the framework at the central level to put things in place so that we can hopefully let our buildings be successful as we go through trying to figure out all this attendance stuff. I'm confident that they're doing, the schools, the teachers, the principals, everybody there has got plenty to do and they're certainly part of this. They're the first line in the attendance part of it. Dr. Chapman, go ahead.
Thank you, Superintendent Sinicropi. So I apologize for failing to emphasize that it is not just a central initiative, but as the executive team and as the center of leadership in the district, we felt it necessary to build a framework on how to move forward. As Superintendent Sinicropi shared, principals, support staff, and the like, everyone is dealing with and have been impacted by COVID-19. So through leadership, we wanted to make sure that we show and that we mentor, if you will, our school-level leaders through a uniform or unified district-level means of getting the information out to the families. And so coincidentally, and so this is a very good question, Dr. Rodriguez, through this initiative, through the attendance leadership team, we have been and we will continue to provide support, to provide training and the like to our school-level leaders, so that, yes, they too can lead their staff members and can support their students and families in those communities. So it is a uniform and a unified effort. Thank you.
Thanks for the response, and I think that the work together, and I think that you are trying, working together from the top to the secretaries and everybody in the buildings, is essential, because we are not a team in downtown and a team in the buildings. We have one team, Lansing School District. I want to thank also every time they had parents calling me, and I refer that to the superintendent, and the parents are really very happy right away the problem is solved, and I thank for that. My other question is, I think our students are suffering psychologically and maybe socially. Do we have a number for the parents in case the students are having a heavy, very difficult times at home, that they can call for psychological help?
Go ahead, Dr. Chapman, Mrs. Black, either one?
I will defer to Ms. Black, that is definitely her wheelhouse and she'll be able to give some very specifics on that inquiry.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman and Dr. Rodriguez for asking the question. Yes, definitely, since March of last year, we have consistently put out and updated. Community mental health contact information for a variety of community services. And also private services that are also available to our families and students. We also work with our community partners that are providing support to our students and families. We just signed a contract a couple of weeks ago with an agency who is taking on another 75, up to 75 students. And their families. And so I think that we definitely have that as well as our student support specialists. We have 26 of them who are available throughout the school day to provide support to students. We have four mental health specialists throughout our district that, I'm sorry, not throughout the district, but they're located at specific schools. We have our school counselors who are also available to assist and support our students. So absolutely, we are working every day to provide more and more support. But yes, the support is in place.
Thank you very much. And finally, Dr. Mr. Senicropi, you say that the hour, the hour FTE is going to be about 10,200?
Correct, that's, what?
How do you get that number?
Well, that's why it's an approximation right now, because we're not exactly sure until we get our next state aid. It's, the attendance is figured this year 75% of the 2019 attendance. So multiply that out, plus 25% of the 2020 attendance. In our case, once, because it's, but it's, it's not 75% of the average. It's 50% of this, 25% of this, seven and a half of this and so on. And the calculations from our finance department figure is about 10,192 students. And we would be counting for our foundation allowance.
Is that correct? We had 10,174.8 last year, multiply that by 75% of their money, right?
Wait a second, let me, let me look at that chart again before I respond. So last year, it would take, let's see, 2019, I'm looking right here. Last year in 2019, we had, if you look at the numbers in red on the enrollment and count trend data is what I'm looking at right now. We had 10,221 students in that fall and that spring we had 10,391. They would combine those and take, combine those, get an average and take 75% of, 75% of that number. Add it to the number you just said, 10,174, plus the 9464 and add those two together and then multiply that by 25%.
25.
Add those two together and that's what we came up with.
There we come. Okay, thank you very, very much, all of you, thank you. I am pleased so much that we're taking the emotional or social, especially emotionally, having so many days without. Things that the young people need to have services for them and it's important. Thank you very much. I just passed the rest, thank you.
Mr. Lopez, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right, all right, let me start all over. First, thank you, thank you for the report. As others have said, it's really a lot of work that's gone into it and answers a lot of questions. But there's also a couple of questions that still come up. One of them is on the videos that you said that have been viewed extensively in a way. Are any of those videos in Spanish or other language?
Oh, I don't know the answer to that.
They are, Cordelia?
Cordelia is nodding her head.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was trying to, my button was stuck. Yes, absolutely, there are 18 languages. So, yes, absolutely.
Great, that's good, thank you. And you've said that we have 41% attendance in November. Of the well checks you have made and all the work that you're doing. Do we know if, if some of those, in the secondary schools I'm talking about, if some of those students have had to go to work because of the situation we have?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, and that counts for some of the halftime FTEs, I know. Because in talking to some of the student support specialists, they're finding students that maybe are working the morning shift somewhere. So they do some afternoon classes or vice versa. I'm sorry, Ms. Black, did you probably, I kind of jumped in there, but?
No, you're fine Superintendent, I would just mimic what you just said. I know that a lot of students are working in the morning and they are watching the recorded video in the evening and taking care of those exit tickets following. Their study. So I would say there is a lot of high school students that are, that are working right now to support their families.
So are they included in the 41% attendance or not?
They would be, well, if they're only a halftime student, if they're there halftime, they would be counted as having good attendance. I mean, in the green, the tier one. Mr. Lopez, before I go on, Mr. McGraw just sent me something that I wanted to make sure that you, we're all aware of. When you put, we put, when we put videos on YouTube, there's closed caption options on there in many, many different languages. And plus, Parent University also is done in a lot of different languages too. So just wanted everybody to know that. Thank you, Mr. McGraw.
So back to my question, is the 41% attendance includes students that are working, which is, okay. I'm talking about the other percentage. Do we know of students that are working more so to help the families and that are not attending school or don't have time to attend school? Do you have any idea of that?
I think we probably, unless Cordelia, unless you do, I think it's something we might have to check out and get back with everybody.
Yeah, I would only be assuming at this point and I would rather not do that. I would rather look at the data a little closer. Mrs. Benavides, you may have an answer readily, I do not on that.
So I can just tell you anecdotally that if a student, let's say a student in Superintendent Senicropi's example works in the morning. But they do watch the videos and they do the exit ticket, they are counted as present for the entire day. So that is one thing that our school district offers that many don't, which is we do offer the recordings of the, of the teachers during their class periods. However, if a student does work in the morning and does not take advantage of those videos or complete the exit tickets, then they would be counted as absent. So it really depends on whether they are completing those exit tickets or not.
So, I guess I really don't know the answer to the question. But I would be interested, maybe the, maybe the nudge letters that you're sending to all district parents and what students? That may give us some information there and I'm happy that you're sending it in multiple languages, that's very good, appreciate that. So, again, you know, I appreciate your work. But I think that 59% is pretty, pretty huge. And we need to know what, have some idea of what those students are doing that are keeping them out of, out of class. And what can we do to help them get back in? I think we must do that. Thank you, thank you very much.
Dr. Beverly?
Thank you, Madam President. I echo my colleagues' comments about their gratitude for this evening's presentation, it's been really informative. Really appreciate all the hard work that went into it as well as all the collaboration. Starting with the first page on connectivity, first slide on connectivity. Question, question about tracking the location of devices. And I know that early on, there were some concerns about district devices being sold on Facebook Marketplace or things of that nature. Have we been doing any type of audit in terms of where the devices are, are they still in the hands of students?
Jessica?
I don't have that information with me, unfortunately Jeff Vanderland is on vacation this week. But when he returns on Monday, I will certainly ask that question.
Right, thank you. Moving on to the slide on Parent University. I recall, I think it was, Ms. Black was mentioning that the 22 participants in November was down. You're expecting participation to go up moving forward. Could you just speak a little bit about what we are doing differently to promote?
We have put, attached a link into Parent View. We send out robocalls, it is promoted on our school websites, our district central website. We also send out posts via Facebook. And so we just continue with, you know, the, we just continue to put those, that information out there. But once again, I just think that it's a unique time in regards to the holiday season compounded with COVID. So I, you know, my goal is to, at least my hope is to see those numbers go up as they were prior to Thanksgiving.
Have we tried reaching out to those who have participated in previous sessions to see what content they would be interested in engaging with moving forward?
Yes, so they all received surveys and that information is being collected. So I will be able to provide a better response in regards to your question with. What types of classes or sessions they would like to have moving forward, once that information is reviewed.
Thank you. My next question is on Learning Labs. I see that we have capacity that 88%. Wondering about whether or not there's additional demand? Do we just have demand for 203 slots? Do we have greater demand than that and pose this, aren't quite sure that these options are still available?
I can answer that, Dr. Beverly. There is more knowledge on the fact that the Learning Labs exist. Every week, I'm getting emails from school principals and other staff of possible children that could use the Learning Labs. The capacity varies, we're 88%. But for example, each, each Learning Lab has its own intricacies, like Foster Community Center. They might have five or six paths available, but they are for a certain age, certain grade. Because they try to place the kids according to the times of what, when school starts in those classrooms. That's one. Impression Five, I'll give you an example. Impression Five, last week, we received a notification that the attendance was very low, they were down to one kid. So with Communications Division, we sent out a robocall to all the families of children whose ages are between 13 and 16 years of age. And in one week, now we have nine kids there. So we keep targeting the sites according to the space available. And we are being more specific instead of targeting all the sites. The YMCA has 13 kids in the waiting list, so we cannot use the YMCA. Caterpillar doing an incredible job of finding ways to help more kids. They open more rooms at Post Oak, they open more rooms at Gardner. So each different site is different, but we continue to fill them as much as we can. And our school staff and families are very aware of this, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. My next question is on student learning. And some of the concerns I've, I've heard regarding both student and staff burnout. I know that, you know, obviously, between our last update on this and this update, you know, we've had a holiday and. Even under traditional schooling circumstances, the period between Thanksgiving and the next holiday break is always ripe with tension and anxiety and whatnot. And I know that COVID has only exacerbated that. I just would like to ask us to double down on some of our mental health efforts and emphasizing some of those supports. I really have appreciated some of the messages that I've received from Mrs. Black and her team. Regarding some of the mental health opportunities that have been available across the district. So just wanted to highlight those. Questioning about some of the challenges with the technology of Google Classroom. I know that I've heard from several parents, I've experienced it in my own home with my students in terms of. You know, you submit an assignment and it doesn't show up and you get a message that your child's missing an assignment. Then you double check with your student and the student's frustrated because, Dad, I did do that assignment, I submitted it. Go in, you look in, it's not there. You know, I've seen, you know, the need to like send email or text message screenshots of completed assignments. I just know that it, there are lots of hiccups and I'm just wondering how can we support parents? As they try to support, support their students in those particular circumstances.
I think one of the ways that we can support our parents is, this might be actually a great topic for Parent University, it sounds like. It could be very responsive need way to respond to that. I do know that Kurt Barnum offers We Learn Wednesdays for all of our teachers on the A-Day if they would like to attend. And also records those videos for trainings for Google Classroom. He also offers open office hours for teachers. And I know that doesn't directly answer the question as far as parents, but the more our teachers are comfortable with the system, those are who our, our parents and our students will be connecting with. So we do take our specific, any specific concerns with Google Classroom and we try to solve those problems and then push those answers out to principals and to teachers. So any concerns that you can share with us, certainly we would be happy to respond to. Because a lot of parents don't know where they can reach out to get those problems solved. And so certainly, that would be an opportunity for us to communicate with parents and maybe do some office hours, open office hours just for parents to log in. We would hope that parents would use the open office hours times for teachers to address those issues. And perhaps we need to push those out just so parents know that it doesn't have to be academic concerns and questions. It could be technical support during the office hours time for their teachers. So thank you for bringing light to that, I think that's something we probably need to problem solve if you've been hearing about that.
I've also seen teacher concern on the flip side that frustrated that students are able to submit blank assignments and it shows up as a turned-in assignment. And so then there's some back and forth as to what was submitted and what wasn't submitted. So I just know that there's, you know, there's some hiccups there that need to be cleaned up on the tech side. I see Cordelia had her hand up.
Dr. Beverly, I just wanted to advise that we, in August, we ran two Google Classroom trainings for parents via Parent University. Mrs. Benavides, it might be time for us to bump the training up to another notch via Parent University. So thank you for that. I will start looking into that right away. I think that, that it is, it's probably time for us to just increase the level probably of training. The training that we did before was maybe more like a introduction or an orientation to Google Classroom. And so to provide a training session for, you know, more detailed ways of navigating Google Classroom would probably work. Also wanted to mention while I, while I have your attention too, I want to reframe my answer in regards to Parent University and how we came about, you know, putting together the sessions. So first off, the calendar was made back in July. And those classes and sessions were developed based on previous data and from following years, previous years, excuse me, of anecdotal data that we've received from parents over, over time. And so how to, you know, help my kid or my student with homework, you know, those kinds of things. A lot of parents, you know, they don't know who to call, who to contact, various tips and tricks, you know. So those are, those, that's how the topics came about. But we still are collecting data on current classes for future classes, if that makes sense. So our calendar is, is pretty set for the whole year. But we do put in and drop in other sessions when needed, such as like A-Day. We, we, we thought that we needed to inform our parents about what to do during A-Day and how to engage their, their students during A-Day. So those are the kinds of sessions that we will, you know, drop into the calendar when necessary. Thank you.
Certainly. And my, my final question is kind of more of a forward-thinking brainstorm. Thinking about the number of students that are quote unquote "missing" or haven't showed up in terms of enrollment that we, that we know are still somewhere in our community. If money were no object, what are some outside of the box ideas that we might consider in terms of engaging those students? Money and resources were, were not an obstacle. What would we might, what might we consider in terms of approaches to finding those students and bringing them back? And I'm not even saying I need an answer right now, but just something to think about. And then, you know, if we have a fantastic outside of the box idea, then maybe we can, you know, pursue some partners to, to, to help us with some of those funding opportunities.
I, I'm glad you said you didn't need an answer right now. So I think that we'll think on that and we'll, we'll have something next week. Well, we have to have it next week for you, so we'll have something.
Something for, for everyone moving forward, doesn't matter.
That's right, okay. We'll give it some thought. Thank you.
That concludes my questions.
Thank you, Dr. Beverly. Dr. Burrows, then Dr. Body, and then Mr. Lopez. Dr. Burrows, go ahead.
Thanks. I want to start by saying I too was very impressed with the detail in the report. All of the previous feedback we'd given about it was included. And in fact, one question, where was your source for the chronic absenteeism number in the United States for 2020? Because I wasn't familiar with that data.
Actually, if you, if you have another question, I will look it up on my computer. I have the article pulled up. I'll just need to access it.
Because I was like, I know about the 2016-17, I know about the 2018 data, but I wasn't aware there was a source for that now. Anyway, my nerdy self wanting to know where you'd know about things.
Right.
So positives, I think that it's frankly remarkable that our attendance levels were, I think, 81% in the last month compared to, it's usually 85%. I mean, yes, it's lower, but that's really close. So I think we should all be really happy about that. A couple of questions that I have. One is sort of technical. On the nudge letter, was that piloted? Was there a, an analysis of reading level? I just want to make sure, something like that, its accessibility for the people it's going to is going to be really, really critical? So I just want to know what kind of work was done to make sure that, that nudge letter was going to be as, as accessible to the parents as possible?
Oh, boy, I'm not, I don't know the answer to that. Jessica, do?
Yes, I know Dr. Chapman will be able to listen a little bit more about this, but as she said, it was started with the SIG schools back about 10 years ago. And there, during that time, there was extensive research around the accessibility of the letter. And I know Dr. Lisa Carlson, who headed up that work, that was the initial, the person who initiated the writing of those nudge letters. So I do know that initially, that had been taken into account when the original nudge letters had been written. We have just altered the data that's within those nudge letters at this time.
Okay, all right, that's helpful. This is just sort of a thought with respect to parents leaving and taking their kids out of the system. Has there ever been any consideration of doing exit interviews? If there's a way to get ahold of them, to find out why they left?
So when they do, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to add, I know that they, they have been done at least informally in the past, but I'll, Jessica, go ahead.
That's exactly what I was going to say. When they, when we do find out when students drop, we do ask the rationale behind it. Some parents will give us the reason why and others will not. But we have not done the calling process afterward with a formal interview or anything like that.
Okay. It's something to think about, in case there's something systematic that's happening. Do we have a sense about what the enrollment changes are like in neighboring districts?
The only one I know of exactly, and I just happen to know it, is that East Lansing is down 45 students this year. And that's, for them, that's probably, what do they have, about 4,000 students? So whatever that percentage is. But I don't know, I do not know any others. I'm pretty sure, and I know he's on the, he's one of the attendees tonight. Mark Johnson from the State Journal has been, I know, doing an article on area attendance and enrollments and things like that. So I'll, I'll put a plug in for him. We'll have to look and see what he has to say.
Okay, I would just, I would be, I would be curious. And then here's where I'm a little concerned, because this is a 5% decline in enrollment. That, that's point one. That's pretty dramatic. So I think, you know, there's a lot of positive things that we're doing and these are very difficult times. But that's a number that just sort of make us all sit up in our chairs and think about what we need to be doing differently. And you probably are. But I just don't want this, for all the positive work that's being done, I don't want that to get lost, which is that a 5% loss in enrollment, if we don't get most of those kids back, that's a pretty serious hit. And I would be very concerned if we saw that again, if we didn't recover immediately or, or we, you know, we continue to decline at that rate. Because that's the kind of rates of, of enrollment decline that have caused other districts some, some real serious issues. So I, I think there's a lot of positive things. I don't want to belabor the point, but I want to make sure we don't just all engage in self-congratulatory happy talk, because that's a very scary number. And I know you guys know that, but I just want to be really clear about it from, from my perspective.
Can I, I just would respond, Dr. Burrows, that I agree. And I, I was not happy, you know, personally with what we have, with the numbers we have. I agree with you. I'm happy with at least the response right now that we're doing to it. But you are absolutely right. And as we look towards the next budget year, that's going to reflect some of that, will reflect some of what we're seeing tonight.
Right. So that, that's more of a, of a, just a statement than a question, but I, I thought it was a comment on me to express it. And, and I know that you, that you share with some of those same, same opinions and perspectives. So one thing I want to really hammer home is that I'm thrilled that we're using a more rigorous measure, frankly, and you guys were very diplomatic about this. Other districts are inflating their attendance numbers wildly. If they're saying two contacts in a week is 100% attendance, that's not real engagement. So I want to applaud you in using more rigorous metric. But on the other hand, even our measures aren't necessarily always going to, you know, be really, about really rigorous instruction. I've talked before about the black screen problem. And I am hearing anecdotally that this is an intensifying problem. And I, and I know that teachers are very, very concerned about students that are not really engaged in the classroom. And, and, you know, we don't know what they're, we don't know what's happening or whether they're even in the room. So that's, that's something that I, I think, I don't know what the easy solutions of that are, but, but the, but the quality of instruction is, is not necessarily, is not necessarily going to be there. The, the last thing I want to ask about is, we've got a lot of information here about student attendance and enrollment. I know in the past, teacher and staff absenteeism has been a concern of the district. Do we, are we seeing anything like a comparable increase in absenteeism rates on the staff side? Or, or are we about where we were before? Or are things getting worse? Or is that too complex of a question to bring up here and we'll bring it up again another time?
We'll, we'll look into it to get exact numbers, but I can tell you that our teacher absences compared to past years are practically nonexistent right now, comparatively speaking. I applaud them, because this, this is tough on teachers.
Yeah.
It may be tough on students and parents, but in some, in a lot of ways, it's tougher on teachers, because this is a completely, the things they deal with, you mentioned the black screen and, you know, the interruptions that happen. So lots of things, and quite frankly, as a former teacher, I don't think we were prepared for, prepared. We, we were certainly not prepared at the college level to look at something like this. So I'll stop, I'll stop before I say something really dumb.
The, the last question I have relates to, and I, I want to be really careful about this, to make sure it's interpreted correctly, because it's a little delicate. The, you gave a lot of good information about absenteeism rates by grade level. I would, I would be very interested in knowing whether there's a targeted emphasis, whether it's particular classrooms that have more intense, whether it's because of the content of, of the classroom, what, you know, or, or maybe the teacher needs more support. Is that something the district has been, has been doing or thinking about?
I would answer that, I will be very diplomatic. We, we have, we are looking at something like that. We don't have, in, in my mind, and Jessica, I'm speaking for you, so go ahead, feel free to add on when I'm done here, is that we're not confident of the format we have right now in order to deliver those numbers.
Okay.
Jessica?
I would just offer that we have disaggregated the data by department for our high schools, so we do have an idea. And like Superintendent Sinicropi said, it's just, it's not formalized data yet, but we have begun collecting departmental data with our high schools so that we can look at core areas, electives, specific areas that are more engaging with our students than others. And we do have the ability to drill down to the teacher level as well.
Okay, great. And I, and I don't mean that as an accountability metric or anything. It's just sometimes teachers and classrooms want to need more support than others and we should, we should target our resources appropriately. Did you find out about the chronic absenteeism source?
Digging through feverishly. I've been able to find it on my phone.
Later, later, no rush. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Body?
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to echo my thanks to all of you for all the hard work that you're doing and it's impressive. My question is about academic achievement or student learning. Are we using any new or creative metrics to understand how much our students are learning during this difficult time? Or, you know, how are we evaluating academic retention?
I would add, Dr. Diaz or Ms. Benavides, I think I have an answer, but I, you probably have a better one than I do, either one of you.
You can certainly share, Sam. And then Jessica and I can, can fill in. I think it's a, it's a joint effort that we're working towards. We have our normal district assessments that we are implementing with students. However, we know that the integrity of the results of those assessments may be a little bit less than what they would be where we face to face in terms of adult support on the end of the student when, you know, when things are done remotely. So there, you know, it's, it is difficult to look systematically at student learning with that type of environment, but it is certainly something that we're looking at. Ms. Benavides's office is looking at failure rates, course failure rates. Where do we see students struggling more than, than others? Where do we need to provide additional support to staff to help them engage our students more? So there are some systematic things that we are working on, but in terms of assessment, that's kind of a tricky place in this current environment.
I'd just like to say, I know there's a heavy focus, at least from the Student Learning Division, with the work of Kim Johnson Ray on progress monitoring with students and looking at the best way to do that in a virtual setting. We in fact have a meeting with the Office of Student Learning tomorrow morning with our NWA to look at various products that they might offer, so that we can monitor student growth online. But I do think that our teachers are steeped in progress monitoring and think the difficulty, as Dr. Burrows talked about, is the black screen. So it's very hard to progress monitor students when you can't look over their shoulder or walk behind students like we normally would in a face-to-face setting. So that is a challenge that we're having to navigate through, because our teachers are excellent at progress monitoring the face-to-face world. But we are really trying to find a model in the online setting to be able to do that progress monitoring with students. I do know that our elementary students and secondary do spend time in small groups, so that's an opportunity for some progress monitoring. So those are definitely things that we're looking at beyond just our benchmark assessments.
Thank you. I would have nothing to add to that. So that's, that's why I called on you guys first.
Thank you.
Mr. Lopez?
I don't know how I got here again, but listen, just one thing. I just saw that the vaccine was approved by the FDA, so Dr. Body, you probably will be busy. And hopefully, we'll get the vaccine ASAP. Thank you, Madam Chair.
It's the first of six vaccines. It's the Pfizer vaccine. Moderna's going to have one, Johnson &amp; Johnson's going to have one. There's six drug companies that are going to come out with the vaccine. And I'm really optimistic that by the second quarter, you know, most Americans will have the opportunity to get it.
That's great. Pfizer was approved today. Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. I don't have any questions, because I think my colleagues have done a pretty good job of filling in any gaps. I just want to state to the executive team and to the superintendent, we know that these numbers are kind of staggering and the enrollment number is, is disappointing to everyone. And we certainly recognize that, but we know that through, that this is through no fault of any of you. This is something that no one could have anticipated. I don't think that any district could have done. I don't think that any district could have done a better job with what we have had to work with. I'm so proud to work with all of you and I'm proud of our district, I'm proud of our parents, but really, really exceptionally proud of the leadership that all of you have exhibited. So thank you so much for your work. Next week is our final board, board meeting of the year. And our final board meeting, wipe that smile off your face, Dr. Beverly. I see it. Our final board meeting with our illustrious and beloved Dr. Brian Beverly. Mrs. Willis, you have something that you want to holler out?
Well, really my comment was just going to be to Lynette to let her know that we see her, that she came to this meeting ready to play with her Harry Hill shirt on. And then just to point out, I wasn't thinking about this when I was going to make this comment, but like it is on for next week. Dr. Beverly, I expect to see you in full Big Red Regalia as one final swan song. And then maybe that'll stop the tears that I know are going to come for me inevitably, so, sorry, back to you.
So what I'm hearing from Mrs. Willis is that she's issuing a challenge to all participants next week to wear your Lansing School District gear and to have a fun final board meeting of the year. And I will absolutely participate in that challenge, Mrs. Willis, no, no problem. No problem. I can go to my mom's house tomorrow and dig through all my high school, maybe I'll have yearbooks behind me. Open to a page with Dr. Beverly's senior pic. Those will be my sister's yearbooks because you're considerably older than I am. Anyway.
All the same parties at the same time.
Okay, let's just leave that in the past where it belongs, back in the nineties. Thank you so much, everybody. We'll see you next week and with no further business for the board at seven fifty-two, we are adjourned.